Let's call this committee the whole meeting for October 17, 2023 to order. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Here.
Alderman Garza?
Here.
Alderman Masiacos?
Present.
Alderman Donnell?
Here.
Alderman Franco?
Here.
Alderman Seville?
Here.
Alderman Tolliver?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Bug?
Here.
Alderman Bade?
Here.
Alderman Lash?
Present.
Alderman Warman?
Here.
Mayor Evans is present.
Is there most approved the minutes of the October 3, 2023? Commute the whole meeting. There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. There is no presentation from the mayor's report this evening. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Yes.
All right, will you read the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the committee of the whole for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the committee of the whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, you call the first speaker.
Susan Klebkey.
Ms. Klebkey, call the next speaker.
David Cannon.
Mr. Cannon, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Hello, my name is David Cannon, Fifth Ward. My question here is where are we with HelloFresh and Factor? When they last presented to this body, they promised to meet with residents. At the time, Alderman Franco also co-signed on such a meeting. That has not happened. They also promised an update. It's been six months. When is the update? Auroraans are suffering at the hands of this multi-billion dollar corporation, and everyone behind these tables just shrugs as if it isn't your problem. This is your problem. It is specifically your problem. This body approved the zoning variance for this business with certain guarantees. Those guarantees have not been upheld, so now it's time to act. When will the mayor's office communicate with the people of Shady Lane? Or do you just hope everyone will give up and go away? When will you facilitate a meeting with HelloFresh and Factor and the impacted residents? I ask the mayor and esteemed alderpeople to do something and get back to residents immediately. We've been ignored for far too long. Furthermore, I would also like to speak briefly regarding our municipality's commitment to sustainability. There are a number of actions that city staff can implement within municipal operations to increase sustainability while saving taxpayers long term. For example, the city fleet only contains one zero emissions electric vehicle. The city can procure high efficiency equipment such as water distribution pumps, computers, or light bulbs for buildings, traffic signals, and streetlights. The standard is to only evaluate the cost of the item, the lowest bid, without regard to the operational costs such as the electricity consumed over the lifetime of the item. While a higher efficiency pump may cost more upfront, the lifetime costs are less. None of these initiatives move forward quickly without support of our alderpeople. Every modern city needs to have a climate plan to reduce emissions and move into the 20th, 21st century. The municipalities that move in this direction first will capitalize economically and benefit from the emerging green call, green job market. Los Angeles is probably the best example of a larger city that has fully embraced this and created 35,000 new jobs in, within two years of implementation. I understand the Aurora Sustainable Advisory Board will present to you later on. Their all volunteer work is incredible. I ask you to please support their work with action. One, I encourage you to reach out to the chair of the advisory board, Chris Murphy. If you don't know her yet, you should. She can help us save a lot of green by going green. Two, please form a department of sustainability. It would pay for itself multiple times over. Aurora should be a leader in making people's homes energy efficient, moving to renewable energy resources, protecting the Fox River and green spaces, and modernizing our transportation system. Number three, create a formal implementation plan for the city of Aurora. Not just rely on the well-meaning, however toothless, 2019 sustainability plan that has no concrete goals, delegation of responsibility, or metrics for success. Please act for our children, for our grandchildren, for us all now. Thank you.
Next speaker. Before we go to the next speaker, Officer Sullivan, would you explain to Mr. Cannon, based on the last time he was here, his inappropriate behavior and disruptive outbursts, that although he is, it's right to come and speak before the city council, that if he maintains those behaviors and outbursts, that there will be consequences? Please explain that to him before he leaves, because I understand he ran out of here for you had the opportunity to explain that to him last time. Call next speaker.
Richard Williams.
Good afternoon. Rick, how you doing? Rick?
Very well, thank you for having me.
You're going to speak beginning now.
I'm here on 23-0175 and 23-0798, and I'm just here to answer questions if it comes up during the discussion, so I have no comment.
When we get to those items, we'll call you up if we have questions. Do you have any additional speakers?
No, Ms. Williams.
All right. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. The Chairman Smith, can you give the Building Zoning Economic Development Committee report?
I sure can, Mr. Mayor. The Building Zoning and Economic Development Committee met on October 11, 2023, and reviewed the following items. 23-0175, an ordinance authorizing execution of and establishing the cost of recapture for a portion of the sanitary sewer improvements located east of Viola Road and south of Deal Road. And I want to make it very clear that the discussion was quite heavy, that none of this recapturing funds comes from the city of Aurora. It comes from the other, the other players that are part of this. And if any, if he's here, if anybody has any questions or...
No objections, I'm going to say.
Could I ask just a quick question? Because, uh...
What's your question?
Just if someone could give us a brief overview. I did read the...
Can someone from the, from staff step up and give a quick overview of this?
Specifically, where, if, I read that the city funds aren't, the funds are not coming from the city. Where are the funds coming from and an overview of the recapture?
It's in the writing, it's in the writing. It's coming from the other two entities.
Correct. Let me share my screen. Maybe. So, the first one is the sanitary sewer improvement. So, Scientel actually was required to, I'm sorry, I'm at the wrong one. Install a off-site 12-inch sanitary sewer line from the east property, or, on the east side of the property, from the north property line from Mateo Valley, all the way up to Scientel Solutions Property, property onto the northern, the northern site, not only to serve the headquarters, but also to serve the future development of the two parcels to the north and to the south of their property. As part of the annexation agreement, a recapture agreement for the portion of that off-site sanitary sewer was entered into in December of 2010 between the city, Eola Venture 1 LLC, which is now Scientel, Yorkville Partners 2 LLC, and the Sobolskas property owners. This agreement depleted the portion of off-site sanitary sewer that was able to be recaptured and then indicated each party's share of that sanitary recapture. The improvements have been made and has been accepted by the city, so the petitioner is requesting recapture from Yorkville Partners 2 LLC property and from Sobolskas property, which are the benefited properties for that portion of sanitary sewer that was outlined in the recapture agreement. The total cost of the sanitary improvements was $480,804.46. They will be recapturing $389,451.60. And that's outlined in Exhibit C that you guys have in front of you. So, that is for the sanitary. And then, let me change my... And then for the water and road improvements, the city required Scientel to increase the water main or upsize the water main from an eight inch to a 12-inch looped water main across the yellow road to serve the future developments. And DuPage County Transportation also required Scientel to construct a right-hand turn lane within Eola Road right-of-way to serve their property as well as the property to the south. Again, these property, or these improvements have been completed and accepted by the city, and therefore, the petitioner is requesting recapture for the water main upsizing from Yorkville Partners and from the Sobolskas property, and then from the Sobolskas property for the roadway improvements. The total cost of the water upsizing was $58,758, and the total cost of the road improvements was $399,283. The total recapture of the water upsizing would be that full amount, which is the $58,758. And then the total recapture for the road improvements would be $199,000, $199,641,000. And again, that breakdown is in Exhibit, Exhibit C in your packet.
Any other questions?
Too brief. Is, is it public property? I assume the roadway is for sure a private property?
The roadway is actually within the public right-of-way.
Okay.
So...
And the rest of it's on private property?
And then you can see on the exhibit, so the water main went across Viola Road, and then it wraps, it looped around the property, and so that was all upsized from an eight inch to a 12 inch.
And then is there any implications for the future development sites that were mentioned in this?
They would have to pay those recapture fees.
Okay, so whoever buys that and potentially develops it would know that going into it?
Correct, because we will record these at the recorder's office.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No objections, I'm going to say.
Next item, 23-0752, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a new lease of real estate between the city of Aurora and TD Hangar LLC for lease of real estate at the Aurora Municipal Airport. This lease will allow for the building of a new corporate hangar on the west side of the airport, and Steve is here from the airport if anybody would like to know more about that.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor?
Consent, Ray.
Alderman Bug?
Thank you. I, of course, it says here that we're waiting, we're going to do a survey, but do we have a ballpark on what the rent will be?
Mr. Andres?
Good afternoon. Steve Andrus with the Airport Division. Mr. Alderman, that has not been looked into in detail right now. We're talking about ground rent, which, so each individual that owns a hangar or a building hangar, they're obviously paying for those costs. So, all we're talking about is ground rent for the property at the airport, and that rate has been established through the FAA, and it's pretty much the same across the board. There is no discussion regarding rental square footage space within those buildings? Does that answer your question? I'm not sure if I understood it correctly, but...
Yeah.
So, we're talking about ground rent at this point.
Well, yeah. Final number, we have to wait and see.
Alderman Lash?
You, you kind of answered my question, but how in line is this, the 48 cents per square foot with other municipal airports? You said FAA rate for ground space, but once a building's built, does it fall in line with either A, what we're currently renting our other spaces out for, or B, other smaller municipal airports like ours?
So, the, the dollar amount that the city will receive right now is based on an estimated square footage of the building or the leased space. We won't know the exact square footage until that property has been developed. But again, this is ground rent, so that, once it's, once it's constructed and they've moved in occupied, they will pay the same rate as all our tenants at the airport.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. 23-0798, an ordinance authorizing execution of and establishing the cost for the Scientel Solution LLC recapture agreement of the upsizing of water main and roadway improvement located east of Viola Road and south of Deal Road. Consent.
With no objections, I'm going to say, because I believe staff already spoke to this.
Yes, yes, Ms. Fasick handled that. 23-0776, a resolution approving the final plot for HC Aurora subdivision located on the west side of Farnsworth Ave between Bilter Road and Corporate Boulevard, and...
Consent. Unfinished.
This is just information only.
Yeah, these last two are for information only.
No, no action needed.
And then the last one is 23-777, a resolution approving a final plot on Lot 1 of HC Aurora subdivision located at the west side of Farnsworth Ave between Bilter Road and Corporate Boulevard. And, Mr. Mayor, that is the end of the BZNE report.
That one also, no action is needed on that.
Correct.
I don't feel... Thank you very much. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Alderman Franco, Chairman Franco, can you give the finance committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met on October 12, 2023, and reviewed the following items. 23-0784, resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant award of $487,000 from the Illinois Housing Development Authority, Strong Communities Program Round 2, for the maintenance and demolition of abandoned and blighted residential properties. This grant is much needed as financial restrictions have limited the amount of properties that needed to be addressed in the past.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to say.
Next one is 23-0796, an ordinance terminating the designation of the River City Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project area and dissolving the River City Special Tax Increment
Consent.
Allocation Fund. All taxing bodies must be notified of the termination of a TIF district and the potential for, potential new tax base for the next year.
Quick question. I support going on consent with this. I just wanted to ask three quick questions. There's two bonds in this TIF. Have those bonds been paid off completely? I assume they are, but I want to make sure.
I believe, I believe they have. If not, they are paid off this December 1st. They will be done by the time the TIF is terminated.
Okay, and then the second question, what process do we go through to notify the other taxing bodies of the redistribution process to make sure that they are following the steps they need to recover that?
We go through the state statutory process of notifying them that the TIF district is ending. If they have questions, they are, they are free to, to talk to us. I believe most of them have been through the, the process before and are aware of what the documentation means when they get it. If they have questions, be happy to work with them, talk to them, however we can help.
And then I guess the final question is, can we get copies going all the way back to see what expenses on those two bonds were expended throughout the course of the TIF?
I would, I will need to dig into the records to know how far back we go and what we have, but we should be able to, to provide that, that information as well.
Thank you.
And Mr. Minnick, before you leave, would just make new Alderman aware that during your tenure, we've had a number of, of TIFs that have expired and that we've notified and made sure all the taxing bodies are aware of the aspiration that they would actually now be receiving their portion of the tax dollars.
Yes, that's correct. That's actually a procedure that's called out in statute that we need to do when we close out a TIF district, and we do comply with the statute.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Unfinished.
I think he mentioned going on consent.
Consent.
No, he said, did you, consent, all right. With no objections, I'm going to say.
Next one is 23-0805, acceptance of the 2022 annual financial reports for the city, TIF funds, and single audit and GADA reports.
Consent.
SICKET, LLP has audited a number of financial reports by the city as they do annually. The audit shows that the city has again fairly stated its financial position.
No objections, I'm going to say.
Next one is 23-0809, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Aurora and Batavia Public School District Number 101 concerning tax increment financing districts in the vicinity of Farnsworth Avenue and Bilter Road. The Batavia School District acknowledges and consents to the new Farnsworth-Bilter TIF district formed from TIF number seven.
This is information only.
I'm sorry, let's go back to 23-0805, which we talked about. That is for information only, and I mistakenly accepted a consent. That's for information only.
Okay.
For the 23-0809, that...
That's a resolution.
Is a resolution, and with no objection.
Consent.
I'll put that in unfinished.
Unfinished.
And the last one is for information only. It's overview discussion of the 2024 budget, 23-0813. And over previously, the last two meetings, we discussed in general terms the budget process. Earlier today, the Finance Committee met for the first time to address in-depth the budgets of particular departments, the schedules for the Finance Committee to present the vetted budget to the COW at Special City Council Meeting on December 5th, and on December 12, consideration of the tax levy. And that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Colonel Sir. Chairman Seville, can you give the Public Health, Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee report, please?
Yes, Mayor, there were any items on the agenda to meet, so we did not schedule a meeting.
Thank you much. Chairwoman Wani Garza, can you give the Infrastructure and Technology Committee report, please?
Yes, Mayor. We got together on October 9. The first item in the agenda is 23-0678, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Aurora and the county of DuPage for central signal system expansion tree installation and future maintenance responsibilities at various locations.
Consent.
With no objections, I'm going to say.
Mr. Mayor, I have one quick question. I know...
Alderman Lash?
I support it going on consent. I just wondered, you know, have we ever looked at having our electricians department do this work for us, because it's a pretty significant contract? Just if, if we've ever looked and explored the, the idea of our own staff maintaining our infrastructure? I understand that there was no competitive bid because DuPage County was going with Mead, but it looks like the costs are continuing to go up, so I wanted to see if we've ever explored that.
At one point, yes, the in-house staff did take care of this, but now we're up to over 100 traffic signals, and they're, and they're so advanced that they're, you need specific training for it, and, and most agencies like Naperville, Lombard, and all of DuPage County Highway have gone the same direction, that we get a very good response time. We have someone on patrol 24/7, 365, so most agencies are heading that, that, that direction with their maintenance programs.
Thank you.
You bet.
No objections, I'm going to say.
Okay, next item, 23-0791, a resolution I was then made, Inc., two-year citywide traffic signal and a streetlight maintenance contract.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to say.
23-0792, a resolution, a resolution authorizing the execution of professional service phase two engineering agreement with HR Green, Inc., for the Farnsworth Avenue Bilter Road roadway improvements in the amount of $1,118,218.72.
Consent.
Unfinished.
Unfinished.
And that concludes the meeting, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Chairman Warman, can you give the Rules Administration Procedure Committee report, please?
Yes, sure, thank you, Mayor. Rules Administration's Procedure met on October 3, 2023, and reviewed the following items. 23-0480, a resolution approving the appointment of Oscar Ramirez Jr. to the Aurora Veterans Advisory Board.
Consent.
Objection, I'm going to say.
And second item, 23-0781, a resolution approving the appointment of Anderson Lee to the Aurora playing in his own commission.
Consent.
Objection, I'm going to say. Objection, I'm going to consent.
And that concludes Rules Administration Procedure.
All right, that concludes Committee reports. Let's go on to New Business. Madam Kirk, can you read the first item under New Business?
Twenty-three zero eight two nine, an ordinance authorizing the settlement of pending litigation related to the redevelopment of 220 East Downer Place and the execution of a Third Amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the city and Downer Place Lofts pursuant to said agreement.
Now, this item, although on New Business, will go to closed session. Is there an objection to putting this on consent pending any potential issue where it may need to be taken off consent and put on unfinished, or voted on, taken off consent once we get to City Council? Or can we just put it on consent now and deal with it later? You guys go in closed session and talk about it.
Consent.
So, we'll put this on consent. We're going to have a closed session on this item. However, if there is an issue, we'll take it off consent, go on unfinished at City Council. Read the next item.
Twenty-three zero eight four one, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class D downtown core onsite consumption liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from Amore Mio in Ward Six.
Consent.
No objection, this item will go on consent. You see, the proprietors of Amore Mio are here today. Anyone has any questions for them, but this restaurant, I believe, Roberto, if you can step up, just give a date of when, or your daughter, when this restaurant will be open.
Good afternoon. Our date for opening is on the 26th, which would be a year that we officially signed the lease, so we're just hoping that all liquor license and all other inspections get passed before that day so that we could officially open.
Hint, hint.
And from the city's perspective, from speaking with our Development Department, we're on track to actually have that soft opening on the 26th, if the City Council votes on passing this liquor license on the next date on City Council. So, it shouldn't be a problem. We look forward to coming and hanging out with you at your new restaurant.
Thank you for your time.
See you next week at City Council.
Quick question. Is that October, October 26?
Yes, correct.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, that concludes New Business. Let's go to our Staff Report. Madam Kirk, can you read the first item under Staff Report?
Twenty-two dash zero nine four zero, an informational presentation of the mayor's Sustainable Aurora Advisory Board on its goals and initiatives.
Hello, Mr. Manila. Are you going to give this report today?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the committee, good evening. Alex Minella, Senior Planner, with the Mayor's Office of Economic Development. Let me kick off this presentation by saying what sustainability is not. Sustainability is not a cookie cutter. Sustainability is not a perfect recipe that you can recreate in every single kitchen. The flavor will be different in every single kitchen, okay? But we also know that sustainability is a convoluted term, differently executed from city to city, state to state, county to county, and why? Because it's the combination of several elements: governance, built-in environment, market conditions, the market environment, and the participation of the community. We are very happy to announce that we have a strong, robust group of residents, citizens actively pursuing sustainability, as well as staff, as well as the current administration, previous administrations. We have pursued, we are pursuing, and we will pursue sustainability. We have heard, we are hearing, and we will hear the comments, the concerns of the residents, and that's the reason why we put forward a sustainability plan that was approved, was awarded county-wide as the best plan of the year in 2019. We didn't stop there. Despite conditions beyond our control, in the midst of COVID-19 in April 2020, we approved, April, yeah, 2020, we approved pledges, we approved plans, we approved, we continue to pursue sustainability. But I don't want to annoy you with, by saying, "Oh, we are great, we are great." Let me, let me demonstrate why we are doing great, actually. Let me go through a brief agenda history. I'm going to present you to the board, the board members. Some are present, present, some are not. We are going to go over the sustainability plan, what that entails. We are going to also go over the accomplishment, and the chairman, Christina Murphy, will, will have a chance, and as well as the other members, to provide you with what has been done so far. And the, the, the item that says goals for 2024 is just a tease. We are working on it. And we are also working on grants. We are going to make you aware of what the landscape features currently and what we are pursuing, and we are going to conclude our presentation. So, history. We know, we are in the game, we are playing, we are addressing sustainability since 2005. But as you can see, as you can tell, sustainability, the concentration, the focus on sustainability reached almost like a peak between 2016 and today's date. But we are continuing. We are not going to stop there. And when I was referring before to staff pursuing sustainability, even in the midst of COVID, despite the fact that we couldn't ensure a tendency, attendance of the, the, the board members in, at City Hall, in public spaces, staff pursued the, the green power partnership with emission reductions, and we'll go back to it. Who are the board members? Christina Murphy, present here, the chair, chairwoman. Adam Kettler, Vice Chair, present here. Mavis Bates, not only a member, but also a King County Commissioner, wanted to acknowledge that. And we have Raman Khan, also present here, perfect. And we have Katie Guzman, that is not currently present here, she couldn't attend, but she's an active member of the Sustainable Aurora Advisory Board. So, the plan, the plan, many of you have had a chance to read the plan. You council members have approved, have committed to it, to sustainability, as well as staff. Each department has been provided with a copy of the sustainability plan, and every single department on a daily basis pursues sustainability. How? Through legislations that come from the state, the county, and at the city level, through the subdivision control ordinances, and other ways that address sustainability. So, sustainability, like I said at the beginning, is not a cookie cutter. There's no perfect recipe, but we are all in the midst of doing sustainability, pursuing sustainability. So, some of those goals that are outlined in this, and on this slide, show how we are addressing sustainability plan, the sustainability. But also, let me tell you what the plan is and what is not. The sustainability plan is a comprehensive plan, and by, by saying that, by saying this, a comprehensive plan is described as a plan that outlines the community goals, the aspirations, the visions. A community plan is not a plan that specifically says, "I'm going to do this by doing this," needs to provide visions. But how are we going to fill the gap of visioning and doing? Well, we are approaching the implementation plan. How? Thanks to the guidance of sovereign local organizations, the Metropolitan Mayor Caucus, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, we are implementing the Climate Action Plan. That's a way to address and implement the sustainability plan. And then, also, other departments are doing it through the Neighborhood Redevelopment Department. There are ways, there are programs, there are people doing it. And we just approved a couple of months ago, the Climate Action Implementation Plan, so we pledged it. We, we were part of the Climate Action Plan, and we pledged it, and we are going to implement it. We are waiting for additional guidance from other municipalities with, among other municipalities, from the Metropolitan Mayor Caucus, and we are going to do it. But... So, these are some of the commitments outlined in the, taken from the sustainability plan. Now, I'm not going to go through every single item. If any of the council members have questions, I'll be more than happy to address and answer any question you might have. But the purpose of this slide is to show that we are doing, we have done, we, and we are not going to stop there. We are continuing to do, to do so. Some of those items don't have, don't show currently a check mark. Why is that? Simply because we are working on it, but we are committed to it. The ones with the check mark is because different departments are doing it on a daily basis in different ways. It's hard to track sustainability when you are busy doing stuff. But I'd like to, to pass the baton to Christina Murphy, who's going to talk about the accomplishments that the advisory board has accomplished so far and is planning to accomplish in the near future.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex. Hi, I'm Christina Murphy, and I'm the Chair of the Sustainability Board. So, I want to go over a couple of our accomplishments for this year so far. I don't want to read these line by line for you, but I do want to highlight some of the things that we've done. We've worked with city staff to secure a grant for $1 million to plant trees from the USDA. Anytime we can bring money in to accomplish our goals, we're always excited to do so. We attend a lot of community events, whether it be Award Event or Green Fest, Aurora, which Mavis here has organized for over 10 years, very large, successful event. We compile information, and we have information for handouts for events or just for interested citizens. We do put together a quarterly newsletter, which is on the website. We also put together financial incentives from the state and federal government that lays out how homeowners and businesses can upgrade their electrical system, get money for new appliances that are more efficient, solar panels, how they go about that. There's a lot of different incentives for that. I went solar, Mavis has gone solar. We have $14 comm ed bills now, which is really great, even during July and August. So, you know, if you can figure out a way to do those upfront costs, which we try to tell people what those options are as well, then they can take advantage of those kinds of programs, too. They don't, not only benefit our environment, but benefit our pocketbook. So, moving on to the next slide here, we've collaborated with other committees or councils, such as the pedestrian, Bicycle Pedestrian and Transit Advisory Board. We share a lot of overlapping goals. Same with Aurora Youth Council. They're our next generation. They're going to carry this. When I'm ready to retire, they're going to step up, and, and they're always part of this new technology, which is what, exactly what this is. This is just technology evolving in a lot of ways. You see that with electric cars, with more energy-efficient appliances, smart controls on our homes. And so, we do attend a lot of educational events, too. Mavis and I attended the Greentown Climate and Equity Workshop that was really well-attended here in the Chicagoland region. I think there was at least 300 people there, learning about how we can all be more sustainable in our communities. And then we're trying to work with other groups within the city, such as the Financial Empowerment Center, to make sure that these incentives are getting out to the people who need them the most. And with that, Alex, do you want to talk about grants? Or do you want me to?
So, we have an exceptional grant writer, Julie Francino. I wanted to give her kudos for coping with, with us, with our continued request to, to apply for grants. So, we are actively pursuing several grants currently available, and outlined on this slide, some of the opportunities that are federally or state available. Now, some of those that are listed here, we, as the city, didn't qualify, okay, for several reasons. And for those that we, we were able to qualify, we applied for grants. We are in, in the process of hearing the outcome of those applications, and we will continue to, to do so. On a federal level, we applied as part of the Metropolitan Mayor Caucus. That's why it is important to be part of a larger umbrella of, of municipalities. That way, we can guarantee that the outcome will be positive, most likely. Chances are in our favor if the group makes the strength. The, some of, so, for example, there's a grant that opened in September. We are in the process of hearing the outcome, and the final decision will be given next year, so in April. Stay tuned. Hopefully, cross finger, finger crossed, we'll hear about that. And then, we are also, before I, I conclude my presentation, in regards to decarbonization, even though we were not eligible or we didn't pursue, we didn't obtain the building decarbonization grant, we are pursuing decarbonization by applying for a grant that will secure up to $200,000, which is the maximum that other municipalities have not been able to secure. They have been able to secure 100, 150, 190,000. We are on, on the list for securing $200,000 to provide for electric vehicle charging stations and electric vehicles for city use and public use as well. So, we are in the process of doing it. I'm open to answer any question you might have, and I think that Chairman Chris Murphy might have some presence for you, some informational materials.
Sure, I'll look at a few copies of these, and you guys can pass them around.
Alderman Smith, question?
Yeah, not so much a question, just for acknowledgement purposes. The Secretary of your Board, is that still Lisa McClewen?
Sorry?
The Secretary of your Commission, is that Lisa McClewen? As you went down and acknowledged all of the members.
Yes, yes, Lisa.
You left her out.
I'm sorry.
She's home watching. I want to make sure she's acknowledged as well.
I truly apologize.
She's from my ward, so I wanted to make sure.
Yes, Lisa is a, is an important chain, link of the chain, and she was also instrumental to link us through the, with the University of Illinois. We are working with them, through them, on implementation of the plan and assessing the status quo of the City of Aurora.
Thank you. And also, next time, you make that a little bit bigger so that those of us with immature eyes can
I will.
You can see it.
Alderman Seville?
Yes, under the, the grants,
Yes.
Alex, under the USCPA Climate Pollution Reduction Fund, mention this might possibly available. And then one of the bullet points are traffic flow improvements. Does that include, like, traffic circles? Are they allocating funding for that? I think we might have one in Aurora. Other communities are expanding exponentially, and I was wondering about that for our community.
So, we are working with Public Works and other departments as well to compile all the proper documentation to possibly have it qualified for runabouts. We'll see. Depending on the, the, I think that those qualify under that program, and we'll, we'll pursue any fund and any possible way to manage traffic in a more sustainable way.
Yeah, I think that would be one way to reduce the traffic and reduce the carbon as well, because people are slowing down and speeding up again at a stop. It increases the, the pollution levels in our city.
And to that effect, I think that Ken Schroth can also talk about the different ways we address the traffic control with the smart traffic lights and management control.
Ken Schroth, Public Works Director, that is correct. We've, over the years, we've used congestion mitigation and air quality grants. We've, over the years, we've used congestion mitigation and air quality grants administered by CMAP to just about have every one of our traffic signals interconnected, so that we can have more green time on primary roads and stop some of that start and stop that you see going on. So with that interconnection, that's the reason we qualify for that CMAC funding, is because of the reduction in, in emissions.
And we do have two roundabouts in the city of Aurora. I know we have one on the west side, over on Sullivan, and one on the east side, I think, is it Lincoln or La Salle? Lincoln, I believe.
Yes, and one similar in Ward 10 as well. We love roundabouts. It's just a function of right-of-way acquisition in most cases, so we keep that, we keep that in mind whenever we have new developments, and always look to that first before proposing a new traffic signal.
And are those grant monies available for right-of-way acquisition to build a roundabout?
I don't believe so. And even if it was, usually it's the hardship associated with the damage to remainder, the parcels that are adjacent to that intersection, you know, that we end up with, front yards that are substantially impacted. That's usually the holdup for us.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Lesch?
The governor's office just released a $20 million grant for Work Up Development the other day, October 12th. Ideally, something like this would be partnered with Wabansy. Do we have any plans to initiate for that grant or work with Wabansy or another education institute? The purpose of it is to educate small contractors to do the work that's necessary to carry out the goals of the Clean and Equitable Jobs Act.
Absolutely.
No, we've already tasked a number of people in the administration to apply for different portions of the grant. This administration saw that as well. And so not only can I have a development, but other, other portions of our city, as well as Invest Aurora, will be applying a portion of the grant. Go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Absolutely. That would be our, our goal and our duty to do so. I haven't been able to read completely the, truly, the document yet, but it will be my task. So once I read through all the qualification requirements, it will be my priority to reach out to possible stakeholders, shareholders and partners in this.
Okay, thank you. And then the last time we discussed sustainability, we talked a little bit about building codes and improving building codes. And I, and I think that city staff said we couldn't go above or below, but the Clean and Equitable Jobs Act changed that. We can go above. The city of Oak Park has some of the most advanced building codes right now in the United States. What are we doing to reach out, grab their building codes and improve ours, as we have a lot of construction going on in, in the city?
Thank you for your question. And if you, if you recall, John Curley, the Development Services Officer, reported that we are required by law to follow and abide the state laws, and that is what we are currently satisfying. Doesn't prevent us to go beyond that. We are addressing any possible ways to pursue sustainability from a building code perspective. All the options are on, on the table, and we'll, we'll address anything that fits our needs in this community.
So the way that it's written, the state law, you know, and the state is going to start feeding us mandatory changes year after year, but it just, to me, makes more sense to go to the top where things are already going and make one big push.
Like I said at the beginning, sustainability unfortunately is not a cookie cutter or a perfect recipe. We are trying to, and we will pursue any possible means and ways to, to address sustainability, and will be creative as the needs arise, and will, will be open to any, anything on the table, anything on the market.
And then final question is, what is our plan? Thank you first for applying for the EV charging station grants. What is our plan to put those around the city? What input from residents? And maybe at the same time, I saw through my emails come in the request for trees. If there's, the public wants to have trees planted in a certain area, is there an open portal or something where they can submit answers?
So in regard.
So it's two questions, I apologize.
Yeah, so one was about the tree and the trees, and the first one was, I'm sorry.
EV charging stations.
Yes, so we are working with staff at different departments, Public Works, Planning and Zoning, Building and Permits, to locate the marketable conditions for EV charging stations. And with this being said, there are nuances, acquisitions, city-owned or in partnership agreements or license agreements with private owners of properties. So as you may imagine, these are nuances that are complicated, convoluted, and we are addressing also those census tracts that might have more needs for EV charging stations. So it's a balance. Sustainability is, is all about creating and reaching a balance. That's what we are pursuing. So I don't have a perfect answer for you, Alderman, at this time, at this moment, but we are crafting how to deploy and where to deploy EV charging stations.
And just so you're aware, and I know you've been involved in these conversations as well, Alex, that with all new construction that, that will be going on in the city of Aurora, we're talking to all the developers about, including EV charging stations with all new construction.
Correct.
I just wanted to add a little bit to that. Many of these grants, most of these grants are promoting the I-88 corridor as an alternate fuel corridor. So a lot of the EV charging stations will be within one mile of the I-88 corridor. I think that'll be an exciting addition to Aurora's development, to have those right off the I-88. And then another one is for multifamily homes. So finding spaces in parking lots with, you know, I can picture in my district on East Illinois, there's probably places there, multifamily residences that could use some charging stations out in the front parking lot.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Bates?
Thank you for the great presentation, Alex. I wanted to ask, how are you planning to use the grant for the trees? How are we deciding where the trees are going?
So I don't know how many of you know, but we do have a three committee, so, for the downtown especially. We are also going to work with the city articultrist, and we are open to receive any possible comments from the community, that, that would be an option. Of course, there are some restraints, for example subdivisions. Subdivisions are required to provide landscaping elements, and it's up to the subdivision to provide the sufficient elements, number of trees, species, and families of trees within that subdivision. So it's the HOA in control. On the public right-of-way and parks, that's another story. That's where the city comes in and can provide elements, natural elements, plants to be planted.
One more question. Do you plan, plan to have any trees with the fruits, fruits trees?
I would probably say no, but that's not, that's not a question for, for me per se, but I will be able to address this question to the proper channels, and I'll provide you an answer.
Thank you.
Alderman Seville?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Pretty remiss not to get in on this conversation, and I really appreciate this presentation and the update provided. Looking at your sustainability plan, 2019 plan commitments, I think it's slide six out of 10, I really think we got the right person here to help us lead the charge and getting some more green checkmarks here. But the one that really pops into my mind, having an architectural background, is sort of towards the bottom third, where it says achieve third-party certification for sustainable public facilities. And I like the fact that you leave it open in terms of saying, achieving a balance, even if it's momentarily. And with that said, I would say that there's an opportunity here. Some of these projects that we've approved, I should say, contracts who approve with some architects for some projects for our fire department, these are public facilities that maybe the group here, the sustainability group, maybe even at a, on a minimum level, provide some guidance and parameters to our team here, working with the architects in terms of what can be done towards working sort of, maybe not a specific third-party certification, but providing a footprint of what we would like to see done at a minimum level, even if it's just a basic LEED certification, so, because it would, now would be the time if we want to pursue that, if we're not doing it already. So I'm not trying to put you up on the spot.
Correct. So as, as I tried to kick off the presentation, I said, yes, there's no perfect recipe. I, I hear your comment, suggestion, concern, and it's well, well-received. I just wanted to point out that the casino will most likely, 99.9%, pursue that certification, not mandated by, by city, city codes or city personnel. We are on a regular basis pursuing sustainability by asking developers to willingly provide for sustainability metrics like EV charging stations and so forth. We are pursuing the state codes, and I also said at the beginning, the sustainability is the perfect combination, and that's where we try to come in, staff, community members, to, to search for the perfect balance. The combination of governance, us and the city, the community needs and wants being heard, but at the same time, the market conditions, the built-in environment. So all these components cannot be unseen, unconsidered. So it's all about how well-received is the economy and the economies of scale, because the LEED certification or any certification come with a price tag. That price tag is going to be reflected to the ultimate users and consumers. So we, we will certainly ask, but we, we will not require.
Well, I've told you here, the line item says public facilities, and the casino's a private one. So I'm just bringing up in regards to, we've already, we've approved some architectural and engineering contracts for the fire station. So I think it's a great time to get at least some minimal input, or have the Sustainability Board perhaps have a discussion, provide some minimal input, and start checking off, you know, another line item here, you know, until we work a better, a better balance. So there is some, some clear definition of what is, was a baseline of what the city is looking for.
Absolutely.
And that's all I'm saying.
Sure.
Before design gets too far down the road, and then, oh, well, we lost an opportunity to provide some input from Sustainability Board. That's all I'm trying to say, as long as we don't miss an opportunity.
No.
And as long as there's still time for it.
Thank you for your comment.
That's all I'm saying.
Absolutely.
And like I said, I think we have the right person here to help us in your person to get us forward, putting more green checkmarks here on this, on this slide.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Seville? Yes, thank you, Mayor. I recently became aware of the Geneva Plan Commission within the last couple of weeks, that they considered a change to their ordinance book for an EV ordinance. And I don't know if you've had an opportunity to take a look at that, but I forwarded to Ed Stephen, and I believe he looked at it.
So.
And I just wanted to say that I think, my, my point is not to, again, put you on the spot or anything, but I think it lays out very good development criteria as to what these EV charging stations should look like in our community, like we regulate everything else, types of development, setbacks, landscaping and aesthetics and those types of things. So I just wondered if you or the Sustainability Committee hasn't had a chance to take a look at that yet, and come up with any guidelines or recommendations.
Thank you for the input. And as part of the program through the Metropolitan Mayor Caucus, we had to assess the current conditions of the sustainability, of the city of Aurora from an asset, regulatory, reg, too difficult for my accent, from a regulatory aspect. We are going to propose before the end of the year, a zoning amendment to include definitions of EV, electric vehicles, electric, electric vehicle charging stations. And we are also try, we are also going to address how to regulate EV charging stations. So perfect timing.
Thank you, Ms. Manilli. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
This is great. Any further questions from any Aldermen? Please reach out to Ms. Manilli, who's happy to provide this information and explain in more detail how we're working hard on sustainability here in the city of Aurora. Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, that's, that concludes our staff report. We are in need of a closed session under Section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, independent contractors, volunteers, or legal counsel for the public body, and under Section 2C11 of the Open Meetings Act to discuss litigation. Sorry. All right. Do I have a motion entered into closed session upon the adjournment of the committee hold meeting? Motion made by Alderman Seville, second by Alderman Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, clear the room. Right, so all right, this meeting is adjourned, and we'll go into closed session right after it.